I don't know, I was having trouble bringing stuff up, so maybe it's not.
Is the internet up for you guys?
It's still what?
Internet.
We're fine.
Yeah? Yeah, I don't know, I was having trouble too.
Are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, then I will, are you ready, Mark?
Well, don't wait for me.
Can we shut those speakers off?
I don't know how to.
It's like a second delay or two seconds.
Yeah, there's an echo up here.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how to, honestly.
There's a power button.
Can we?
I don't really think I need this, actually, no.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, that's gone.
Is it ready?
Echoing.
That turned off all the, all the audio I hear, I think Dan would be running, running up and down. No, 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 I think we're good.
No, I think it's just on the, it's the amplifier on the first speaker, so it should be okay.
I'm sure he'll let us know if there's a problem.
He would let us know.
We'll find out.
He would be running down the hallway right now, so we're good.
So, for now, I will go ahead and call to order the City of Berkeley Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 28th. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Erin, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bardis?
Here.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
Commissioner Kempner?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Commissioner Petrowski? Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Stern?
Here.
Chair Kapalansky?
Here. So with Commissioner Petrowski absent, we do need someone to make a motion if he is excused, correct?
Correct.
Does anyone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Erin, could you call the roll?
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda, any changes or motions to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Erin, could you call the roll?
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Alright, next up are the minutes from August 24th, any changes to the minutes from anyone? Or motions to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Erin, could you call the roll?
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to Communications, we have several items, an issue of planning and zoning news, as well as the Road Commission's Road Report. This is other, we have some items related to agenda items tonight, and then we also have a flyer for Buckley Nights, it's very clever, so a whole month of downtown Berkeley events and activities to celebrate the month of October. Is there anything else? Okay. That brings us to Citizen Comment. For those people attending the meeting in person, we would ask you to come to the podium if you would like to comment. This is for non-agenda items. To please state your name and place of residence prior to starting your comments, and reminder that you will have three minutes to speak, and the Planning Commission will not engage you in discussion. For those attending virtually, participants in the webcast can utilize the Raise Your Hand function by selecting Manage Participants on the bottom of your dashboard, then select the More button in the bottom right-hand corner. Our moderator will call your name and unmute you so that you can speak. For those that have called in, you can be placed in the queue for public comment by selecting *9. Our moderator will announce the last four digits of your phone number for recognition and unmute you so that you can speak. Again, a reminder that you will have three minutes to speak, and once your minutes are up, you will be muted by our moderators. Additionally, we will read comments that were emailed to planning@berkleymish.net prior to 5:00 PM. Given the circumstances with the virtual space, we may not be able to read through all of the email comments, but please know that we will have them stored and acknowledged on the public record. So at this time, we will receive any public comment for non-agenda items. Is there anyone attending in person who would like to comment on an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move to email correspondence. Erin, have we received any email correspondence?
No.
And then lastly, Dan, is there anyone attending virtually who would like to speak?
At this time, there's nobody.
I will take that as a no?
Maybe I shut Dan off, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe you shut Dan off.
Maybe.
Dan, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Dan, can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Take a pause.
We don't normally have that on though, do we? It's not normally on though.
No.
Uh-uh.
There is someone in the waiting room.
There's someone waiting?
There's someone in the waiting room, yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We want to switch your seats, we do want you. Is Dan in this office?
Yes, he is.
I know that he's coughing, sorry about that.
We'll go check.
Otherwise, I'll just switch it so the TV monitor sounds.
Can you hear me? You can't hear me in there?
Nope.
Nobody has their hand raised currently?
Okay.
I will call 40.
There's one person waiting in the waiting room, but they do not have their hand raised to address anything on the Citizen Comment.
Okay, so we can go ahead and close public comment then? Can we move on, or should we wait?
Dan, can you say something, please?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
On the internet now.
Are you? Yeah, no, that's right. Seems like there are videos jumping around a lot too, I wonder if the, if something's going on with the internet?
He said he didn't have his hand raised?
No.
Okay.
Can we?
I think we can move forward.
Okay. So that brings us, excuse me, new business. Site Plan 01-212717 Coolidge Highway, a facade change for the existing building. Is the applicant here this evening?
Yes, they are.
Erin, do you want to go ahead with the staff report?
Yes, so I'd like to reference my September 21st, 2021 review letter. Nick Appleyard, the owner of Perch 313 is proposing the facade change of the vacant building at 2717 Coolidge, formerly the Disabled Veterans of America Chapter 19 Building, that's located on the west side of Coolidge. The applicant is proposing the exterior and interior improvements for a new business, Perch 313, which would be a vintage rug store. The applicant is proposing to remove the vertical siding, the mansford roof and awnings, and will replace with painted brick veneer. Five windows and a new front door with decorative windows. The facade materials on the south and the west sides of the building are not proposed to change, however, they are going to be swapping out the existing glass block windows with just single pane, or single, single windows. So I've provided you the zoning and land use of the subject site, which is vacant, and the northeast, southwest, so it's surrounded by commercial and, on the west side, a single-family residential use. The standards of review are included for your, for your review. The couple of things we want to take note for, for the Planning Commission's consideration, the window coverage. So, in the Coolidge District, it's a requirement for 40 to 80% window coverage. The applicant is proposing changes and modifications that would include 27% window coverage, or 33% if you include the decorative doorway. Now, this is a vast improvement over what is there. You know, if you look there, the only thing they have there is, is the doorway itself, which accounts for less than 5% of total coverage of that facade. So they're greatly improving the facade and allowing for extra windows that will really enhance and bring some vibrancy to that area. If you see to the south of it, they have the Atomic Dog, to the north, they have pinstaration and a chiropractic office. The increase in windows will really do well in that area. The Disabled Veterans Building has been just very blank for many years, and this will really activate that space. They're not proposing any adverse effects or anything else to the building. I will say that the, the windows on the south side, as I mentioned, they're going to be replacing the glass block, so this will really allow for extra light, extra decorative elements for when you're driving north on Coolidge, you'll be able to see that there is some vibrancy even when you're coming up before you get to the, get to the facade. Pedestrian and vehicular areas are designed for safety, they're not proposing to make any changes to that area. The signs, if they're, they've talked about putting a, putting in a sign here as part of their site plan approval process, any signs would have to be submitted for future approvals through, through the Building Department. We have asked that the applicant provide a sample of the colors and materials for Planning Commission review and approval. You'll see on the site plan that they just kind of referenced that they're going to be doing the brick. The applicant has provided, and I gave to each every one of you, a rendering review set for what they're planning on doing, so you can see the color and the design here, and I've asked them as well to provide that to, to the Planning Commission for your review and approval. There's no changes in landscaping or overall site design. The applicant is proposing to add some exterior lighting to the front by the doorway. This will, again, liven up that, that entrance and make it seem more inviting and activate that space for pedestrians. We will ask the applicant to provide design renderings of those lighting installations, not only to make sure that they comply with the design standards, but also that they make sure that the illumination levels do not exceed what is permitted by ordinance. Site engineering, DPW has reviewed the plans and has provided a letter under separate cover. The fire marshal has reviewed them as well and found no issue with them. He didn't provide a letter for, for your review, he just sent me an email saying he had no issue. He will be reviewing the interior modifications and everything else through their building permits when they do the interior modifications. And due to this project, a full site engineering review is not required. The DDA has also reviewed the plans. He, the acting Executive Director, Mike McGinnis, has provided a letter for, for your review, noted that the Downtown Development Authority has reviewed the plans and find that they are in compliance with the design guidelines. So, they found that they were very excited about this project. The DDA, the applicant is not securing any kind of grant funding for this project. They were in talks to do that at the very beginning, so they were very much involved in, in some of the discussions, but they have decided not to move forward with the grant process. So, but the, the DDA still looked at it and found that they were in compliance, not only the materials, but the overall aesthetic with the design guidelines. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything to add?
No, not really, I mean, do you want me to come up here or?
Absolutely.
Yes, please.
If you would speak.
Sorry, I'm Nick Appleyard, that's my wife Molly, and this is Ken, he's the architect, Ken Morland from DMA. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I've brought actually an example of the colleagues, I know that was important, so if you want to just go around the room. And what we've got here is just the brick color itself, because I know that's quite important. But I think in general what we're doing, I don't, I don't know if people are aware of the building today, but we're pulling off the whole of the front facade. We don't know what's underneath that facade, just so you know. So we're going off, so what we're presenting here is what we think might be behind there, but as this thing gets pulled away and gets exposed, obviously, there's going to be some, we don't know how much of a variance to it, but there will be something, we'll have to take a look at and see what, you know, what needs to be done, in terms of what we can do within our budget. But that's what we, what's put in there today is what we believe is behind that wooden facade, and it's what we're going to obviously go towards in our design.
Okay. We'll let you know if we have any questions.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? Okay. Then we will move on to the Planning Commission, who would like to start? Anyone?
Well, I can start.
Go ahead, Marty.
I'd like to start out by saying it's good to have a, a site plan facade approval. We've been doing nothing but talking to each other for probably, what, eight months?
Mm-hmm.
Or more, so.
I was a little out of practice when I did my letter.
And I do my fair share of it too, as everybody knows. This is a, a vast improvement over a project, or over, I'm sorry, over a building that's been there, I don't know if everybody's been by, this is what it looks like. What is your business? Please, if you?
Describe what the business is.
Doesn't affect the?
Let my wife, she can.
It doesn't affect the facade, I'm just, yeah, it doesn't affect the facade, I'm just curious, I didn't.
Just describe what it is.
I own a vintage rug business, so I import and sell vintage rugs. It's an online business mostly right now. But we want to expand that to other decor, and then obviously, there's going to be some office space in the building too.
Okay. Thank you. The, the rendering that was provided, this, this, with the color, does not match what's on the proposed drawings. Which one is it?
Do you want to answer that one? Sure. Oh, that can answer that one.
Yeah, the, the architect's drawings show new, a new thin brick, a stone ledge, access, metal access.
That's an older, that's an older rendering.
It is, okay, well, that's all I got in my packet, so.
So just to, yeah, just to reiterate, so what, as I said, we?
Okay.
We don't know what's underneath that wooden facade.
Right.
And so we did some hole drilling to figure out, and what we found is, in fact, there is some brick behind there.
Mm-hmm.
We're going after the brick with things behind that at the moment.
Right. My name's Ken Morland, I'm with Georgia Martin Associates. From the inside, we drilled holes, and that's how we were able to find that there were some windows that were there. And it appears, when we pulled back, they had put some rigid insulation, then some insulation, then drywalled over it. It appears that it's block, but it may have a veneer on it as well, that might be painted already. So, it's just very difficult to know exactly what is behind there, and what the condition of it is, until we are able to remove the existing wood and, and see.
Okay, my question is, yeah, I do have this, which is apparently an old elevation, I had this.
I had removed that one from the packet and then put the newer ones on there.
Oh, I thought this was just a sheet calculating the window area, I didn't see any notes on it, what it was, that's why I assumed it was.
Yeah, no, no, that was an older one, I had removed those and put the newer ones on with just the brick facade.
So, what is the facade going to be then?
Right now, it will be, as long as the existing masonry block is in good condition, it will be painted.
Okay.
Per the color that was. The gray.
Okay, the dark, the dark.
Yep.
The dark gray, okay.
Right.
Okay, so, okay, so we're guessing that's, that's concrete block underneath there?
Yeah, I, I do know that the inside face is a block. What I don't know, from looking at it, I couldn't tell if there's, there's a block, there's like an eight-inch block, and then there's a veneer. I don't know if that's a stone, or a block veneer, or a brick veneer, because of the painting that was on it.
So if there is a brick, or stone, or something veneer, I mean, nobody knows, I, I don't know.
Right.
Is that all going to be painted?
Yeah.
Okay, so the intention is to do this?
Correct.
And, and this is representative of a concrete block, but it could be another type of masonry?
If, if, if it is actually a brick veneer, then we still intend to paint it, only because it would, from, again, from the inside, it looked like it was painted, trying to clean it up and take off the existing paint, you're, you're going to end up damaging the brick, or do it, you know, you don't know what you're going to get into. So, yes, it would just be, it might be a different size, like a brick versus a block.
Okay. I guess I didn't open the, the later version, so.
Yeah, you must have, I, I sent it off, everything on Thursday, and then Friday was the revisions, you must have grabbed it.
Well, I grabbed Thursdays, and I thought Friday was just the addition of the, the comments for the master plan or something.
My apologies, I should have alerted that.
Okay. Regarding the, okay, thank you, but regarding the window areas, you know, we do have that ordinance, 40 to 80%. You know, they're pretty much at 5% now, and it's set back seven, eight, 10 feet, 12 feet, or eight feet. It's a vast improvement, it's pretty close. You're adding, you're getting rid, as you mentioned, the glass block on the south facade. You're adding a window at the steps, adjacent to the steps, just adjacent to the entry door.
Actually, that window, I'm sorry.
Is that existing?
That window.
Yes.
It's a double, right now, it's a double doorway, so it'll be a single doorway with the glass paint on the side.
Understand, but there's also, it looks like there's a new window on the sidewall adjacent to the door.
Actually, that exists.
Oh, that does exist, okay, it's just a blank line on the old plan, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so regardless, even with, even with the, and you're, are you speculating, right now, the old building looks like it's a pretty regimented set of?
It is.
Three or four-foot wide windows?
Yep.
The intent is to knock out the mullion between two of them and increase?
And increase the size of those windows.
Can you see the structure from the inside?
No, no, I'm going on experience.
Okay.
I know that, you know, I don't know what that header will end up being, but I know that by making it, when I measured them, they were 32-inch wide windows, 16 inches between. And so if I take out one, we're going to end up with like a six-foot-eight wide window. And I know that we can either do a pre-cast header, or we can do a steel lintel with a plate and, and make it work.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But what I'm getting at is, and this is my opinion, there's, there's eight of us up here. I think you're close enough, you've made an effort. And that side window by the door isn't really on the facade, but with the door set back, it's there, so we're real, we're real darn close. So, I don't have an issue with that, with the, the window area being a little bit under the ordinance. I don't know about everybody else. The sign is a separate permit, there's nothing here. Are you adding a new coping to the front?
A new coping, the?
To the front facade?
No.
Right now, it looks like it's tiled coping all the way around?
Oh, you know, again, until we get it tore off and see what the coping is, it would probably end up being something to match what's there, with, it would be the tiled coping.
Well, yeah, there's a, there's some sort of a mansard, shingled mansard on there now.
Right, and, and I was up on the roof, but I just couldn't tell.
Okay.
What they did.
But it'll be colored or finished to fit what you're doing?
To match the, the adjacent material.
Okay, and you're looking at an orangish-type storefront framing? The rendering shows something that looks orange, which looks kind of cool with the black.
Or wood.
Or natural wood.
Yeah, it's more, it's more of a natural wood.
Natural wood, okay, okay.
Kind of give it a European feel, just so you know, that's the direction we're going.
I can't imagine why. But that's fine. Yeah.
Importing from.
Yeah, yeah, so I think those are the comments I have, I don't have any issue, like I said, it's a, it's definitely a huge improvement over what's been there for decades, I assume. I never even noticed it. You know, driving down Coolidge twice every day, can honestly say it's just faded into the background, so it's good to see something happening there, thank you.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, so, nondescript, I think, maybe, is the, the word you're using for the current building. Yeah, I'm, I'm satisfied with 33% coverage, I, I do think it's close enough to our, our, the minimum provided by the ordinance, and I would point out, I don't know who was on the commission or wasn't on the commission, the last time this came up, we did, it, it wouldn't be unprecedented for us to deviate from the, the minimum, we did that up the street at Vibe, and I remember being a little concerned about that at the time, but that, that worked out very well. I think, I think, and I think this will too. And it's a definite vast improvement over what's there. So, I, I am very positive about this application.
I, I agree with the previous two commissioners, I think it's a great, it's a vast improvement over what's there. I don't have a problem with it being a little bit under the 40%. I did have a question about the ADA parking, we're showing ADA parking in the road. That's probably certainly not to code, and that's probably not so much them as it is a city, city thing, as far as how the ADA parking works along the street fronts like that.
Yeah, that, that's actually a really good point, we were just talking about it in our directors' meeting, so that ADA space was there specifically for the use for the Disabled Veterans Building, so that will, that signage will be removed, so it won't be specific to, to, to anybody, anyone can use it from now on.
And as far as parking, they required nine spaces, there's two on site, which I drove by on the way here, I could see that they had it, the, the gravel kind of mounted up so they could drive over the existing landing, the ADA landing, in the back there. But the other, again, another question as far as how the city handles on-street parking, and how it's, it's obviously shared amongst all the buildings along there. How does that work, you know, as far as parking? If they have the, if they're required nine, you know, do you have to look at it from a whole, you know, what else everybody else needs?
Well, right now, we don't have an ordinance that specifically addresses the on-street parking and gives kind of credit to everybody. That is something that we. Um, that is something that we will be discussing and working through, um, through the planning commission, because, um, you, you know, that's something to take into consideration, given the small lots here in the city, and making sure that, uh, we don't, uh, alienate future businesses from coming in here. Uh, the parking requirement was looked at, uh, when they submitted their business license, uh, and that was something that we, that the city manager deemed to be appropriate, given the proximity to the street parking, as well as the, uh, public parking across the street.
Okay, that's all I had, other, the, the building looks great, so.
Anything, Lisa?
Yeah, um, I can live with the windows, I'm okay with that, um, the parking bothers me a little bit, because the municipal parking, you're not supposed to be able to cross Coolidge. My biggest, biggest concern though, is the two parking spaces, and how you have to cross over the sidewalk to get to them. Um, and that's just dangerous, right, because it's between two buildings, where there's not a lot of pedestrian ability to see, or vehicle ability to see pedestrians. Um, I would feel a million times better if it was blocked off on the Coolidge side, and could only be accessed from the back alleyway, so you're not crossing the sidewalk, and we don't have to worry about any bad accidents or anything like that. And it would make ours, Coolidge, just a little bit more walkable, which is a good thing. Greg?
Um, yeah, I'm actually really excited about this project, I think it is a vast improvement, as the others have said. Um, it's really completely different than what's there, um, I totally agree with the windows, yeah, it's not exactly what we want, but it's close enough, in my opinion, um, it opens up a building that's currently closed, um, closed up, and I'm excited for you guys to have another new business in Berkeley, so, that's what I have.
Anything, Julie?
I, I would just repeat what Greg had to say, so.
Okay, Joe?
Um, yeah, just two questions, is, on the elevation views for the south and the west, this plan looks different than the exterior, is that, um, is it all gonna be gray, no matter what's on this, on the south and west side? Uh, material too, cause this says, yeah, this says, uh, painting, painted existing CMU.
So, if I understood your question, you say, is it all gonna be the same color, is that right? Is that your question?
Make sure they're all gonna be the same color.
Yeah, it's all gonna be gray, the whole building, yeah.
Okay, and then the material, the facade on the south and west side will just be whatever's pulled off?
Whatever's behind.
Okay.
Assuming it's brick or whatever, and Ken, you wanna?
Yeah, you're talking about the south facade and the west facade?
Yeah.
Those are exposed, that's block right now.
Yeah. Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, yeah, the only thing that has, uh, different is the actual east facade, has the wood and then the mansard.
Okay, and then I think you said through the signing permits, like that's all separate?
Yes, the sign permits are all, are all separate.
Just cause the, this one rendering shows a sign on the south exterior?
Mm-hmm.
But then on, doesn't look like there's one on the, these plans that we received too, but I think that's handled through.
Yeah, that's all handled administratively.
Yeah, okay.
So, I would, um, share Lisa's concern, I don't think there's anything we can do about that situation, since the existing condition, but, um, anything we can do in the future to, to help minimize some of those problems with being on the sidewalk, and not knowing if a car is gonna come out from in-between the buildings, would be great. Um, it didn't sound like anyone had any additional questions, does anyone wanna make a motion? Go ahead, Greg.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for SP zero-one-two-one, twenty-seven seventeen Coolidge Highway facade change.
Support.
Is that sufficient, Aaron, or do we need to list the conditions that you have in the staff report?
Well, you can just reference the staff report and/or list them all individually.
In the staff report, the conditions.
And if you, the, two of the conditions were noted, that you agree that the reduced window coverage under the forty percent is okay, and you're okay with the proposed materials and the colors and the fit?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, that, in the staff report.
Support.
Okay, Aaron, could you call the roll?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, thank you so much, um, for your investment in the city, and, yeah, good luck. Okay, next up is the master plan, what do we have on that this evening, Aaron?
Hey, well, we're here, this is exciting, okay, so, um, you'll see in your packet, excuse me. Um, prepared by Carly Wartman, unfortunately, they weren't able to attend this evening, so I was presenting this item to you. Uh, we have concluded the sixty-three day required public comment period, as required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. Um, so, as part of that requirement, uh, we have provided to you all of the comments that were received, um, either by email, or we, as I mentioned before, we set up a, a number of comment boxes through all the, the city facilities. Um, there was one box that was inadvertently missed, um, at, at the public library, so you'll see the updated version, um, here included, so the ones that, um, are, are added are highlighted and read for you. Um, so, blah, 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 all of the other comments were provided to you, um, in that memo, not only from adjacent communities, but also from, uh, Oakland County, RCOC. Um, the majority of people found that, um, um, those reviewing agencies found that we were not inconsistent with their plans or the overall co- county plan, um, so it's a double negative there, so it was consistent. It gave us all a moment of panic every time we read that, but, uh, um, found that we were, uh, we were in, in, in line with some of the other, uh, methods of thinking through other communities and through the county itself. Um, the public comments that we did receive were overall positive, uh, we were very excited about that. Um, so, we wanted to provide you a little bit, um, uh, construct of, of the themes that we, we found here. So there were some small correction and formatting suggestions, you know, that happens anytime you look at a document for, for months and weeks on end, you, you kinda skim over the, uh, some of those things, but, uh, we will be making those, uh, Carla Wartman will be making those updates. Um, certainly, the, one contributor asked for the use of should in the design guidelines, uh, rather than a must. Um, that way, it gives a little bit more flexibility when we design the ordinances, uh, in the future. Um, other small corrections can be drafted and, and implemented when we have the, the public hearing, if the planning commission, uh, directs us to do so for the next month's meeting. We did receive a number of zoning ordinance update suggestions related to, to parking and, and things like that. Um, those are all things that we will be undertaking later, uh, we really feel like, you know, um, those are things that are just a little bit too, too focused to get into, to the master plan, and it pigeonholes us from having, uh, discussions later on. So, uh, those are things that we'll get into a more deeper dive when we, when we go through and, and, um, update our entire zoning ordinance. Uh, there were some suggestions that asked us to get into greater detail in sustainability and systems, uh, and infrastructure as well. So, uh, I spoke with Megan at length about this, and the way that we were kind of, uh, decided to approach this was, the suggestions and the items that people wanted us to dive into was a little bit too in-depth to go into for a master plan. Um, those types of things will take a lot more study and a lot more, uh, review and analysis. So, what we're, um, suggesting on that front is, you know, keeping those suggestions and kinda putting them, uh, over here in, in a pile for now, and then looking at them and maybe designing, uh, an infrastructure plan, a sustainability plan, a systems plan, something that where we can really look into those particular topics under a deeper dive. Uh, the environmental committee did a wonderful job with their, their energy plan, and that's the type of, uh, analysis and, and review that we should really be doing on those types of things in separate documents, not as a part of the master plan. Uh, so, uh, we really think that that would be the best way to go about that. Finally, there were some concerns related to the Greenfield and Elwood corridors. Now, that was something that we had, had discussed, uh, during our, our, our work sessions, that would be, um, that might be difficult for some people, and so we knew that that would be something that we would get some concerns about. So, the particular concern was the impact upon the adjacent properties, multiple family residential on Elmwood didn't necessarily fit the character of the area, and the three stories is too tall, those are some of the, the major comments we got. So, we would like you to, um, discuss tho- that particular comment in that particular area and corridor uh, this evening, and see if that's something that you want to go back and work on, or you feel comfortable with the way things have been done at this point, on how that is, and move forward with, with setting the public hearing. Um, so, the process and recommendation that, uh, Carla Wartman has, has laid out, uh, in conjunction with, with, uh, our discussion, uh, the remaining process for the master plan, uh, planning commission would set the, the public hearing, um, and then at the, we would set the public hearing for next month's meeting, we would have the public hearing, and then you make a recommendation, and then city council would take action at the following meeting. Um, if you're not quite ready to set the public hearing, and you wanna dive deeper into the Greenfield corridor, El- Elwood discussion, uh, then we would, uh, postpone and, uh, set a date for a work session, so we can really deep, dive, dive deep into that, into that topic. And included in the packet, as I mentioned, were, were letters from Oak Park and City of Southfield, um, Oakland County Board of Commissioners and, um, RCOC. I did reach out, again, to Huntington Woods and, uh, Royal Oak, who also share borders with us. Uh, I did speak with, um, uh, the zoning administrator for Huntington Woods several months ago, uh, right after he'd received the letter, and he, he didn't have any question, concerns about it, he said he would give me a letter, but he didn't, so. Um, but I haven't heard anything from any of the other reviewing agencies that would give us pause or concern that we need to, to go back and review anything in depth. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, so the main item of discussion for this commission then, is the Greenfield Elwood?
Yes. And if there's anything else that you saw in those comments that you think we need to take a deeper dive in?
Okay, so why don't we just get right into the Greenfield Elwood first, cause that's something we do have to address? Who wants to start with that one? Mark?
Um, I, I may have some further comments later, but just preliminarily, um, uh, there are existing three-story buildings on Greenfield, are there not? A, a few of them?
So, our ordinance allows three stories or forty feet.
Yeah, but there, there are existing structures that are three stories.
Not on our side.
No, not on our side.
On Greenfield, or, or, what about the?
No, cause we have mostly single-family residential, we have a church, we have a couple of one or two-story duplexes, but.
What about that, that, uh, multifamily, just north of twelve? Is that two stories?
I think that's only two stories.
It might be like two and a half, it's, it's a tall two-story.
It's tall, but in comparison to a single-family residential nearby, or a one-story commercial, it does seem high, but I don't think it's anywhere close to.
Well, there haven't, haven't been any issues with that particular, uh, site, have there, but any complaints, or?
Not that I'm aware of.
Any community impact, um, well, um, you know, I, I guess, just some thoughts I had, uh, after looking at the language in the plan, um, we did discuss at length the practical impediments to actually implementing some of the development we're talking about, and, and one of the major ones is, uh, you know, the economics of assembling, uh, lots. Um, you have to make a major investment in, in, uh, assembling, uh, a site to actually pull off a, a project like this, and I, I think that maybe going in a little more detail in that section about the, uh, the process of, of actually, uh, developing, uh, multifamily, uh, along, uh, Greenfield, might, you know, it, it might, it, it'd make the document a little more realistic, but it, it might also, um, kind of assuage concerns that this is something which could kinda sneak up on, 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 uh, on the community and, and, and not be, um, uh, you know, have, have an impact before anybody was ready for it. Um, so I, I think just kind of maybe adding a few sentences about, um, you know, the, the process that would be needed, uh, might be helpful, you know, to, uh, inform the community, and, um, uh, you know, I, I could have some other comments later, but that was just something off the bat I thought might be helpful.
Okay, go ahead.
Regarding that, that green, uh, that Greenwood, Elwood, Greenfield Elwood property, in, true in keeping with my pattern, I'm looking at an older version instead of the latest, but I know we discussed the three-story buildings on the Greenfield side, and on Elwood's side would be two-story buildings, I don't see that in my older, my older, that information is not, uh, part of the, 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 the page on my older version here, but maybe that's something that, but we did discuss that.
Yeah.
And I think that makes a lot of sense, you know, on the Elwood side, those of you who were here at that time, you know, we, we wanted, um, we wanted the build, the, the, the scale of those structures, notice they're generally shorter too, we wanted the scale of those structures to be, uh, co- closer in keeping with the, uh, with the other residential, uh, single-family around it. So, we did address that, it, it isn't reflected here, but we did address.
In the June draft, it says, um, uh, buildings located in Greenfield may be taller in scale than, to exceed three stories.
Yeah, okay, good, well, then it is in there, so, okay, sorry, I'm in the nineteen seventy-five draft.
Commissioner Kempner?
Um, yeah, so, it, what we have right now already allows multifamily on Greenfield, it already allows three stories on Greenfield, or up to forty feet, um, so that's not really changing. All this is, is really like a very pretty picture of, hey, this is how we would like to see it all put together, right? So that it's not, so that it's not, um, impacting the people in Elwood, because they would be developing Elwood too, so when you had a house on Elwood, or when you rented, or however that works, you would already know what you're getting into, and based on comments I've heard, that means they'd have to, the developer would have to buy your house. Nobody would take your house, the city wouldn't demand anything about your house, the developer, and you would have to come into an agreement for buying a house. So, this is a wonderful dream, it'd be great if we saw it, it's probably a pipe dream, because that's a lot of properties to have to get together. Um, but it's not particularly different than what we have, it's just put together and said, this is how we'd like to see it all played out.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bardis?
Yeah, and if I remember correctly, isn't, so Elwood and Greenfield was just a potential example of a development?
Right.
But technically, isn't the, the future land use for the entire stretch of Greenfield the same? So it could be any block, is that correct?
So, yeah, Greenfield.
Elwood's here.
Yeah, they run, they run parallel. Right.
It would be all the blocks between Elwood and Greenfield.
So it's not, okay, not any particular block, even though it's, it looks like it's one particular block, in, in those renderings, so.
Correct, the.
Yeah, it could be the entire stretch.
Could be anywhere, yeah, the rendering was just a, a, a conceptual idea of where something could be.
Right.
And I don't believe that example had any road names on it, did it?
No, it didn't.
It was supposed to be just a generic, someplace between Greenfield and Elwood, here's something that maybe could happen.
And that was done purposefully, so that people didn't, didn't associate with, it can only be there, or they're gonna do this to my house, it, it could be anywhere on Greenfield, if, as, uh, I can't remember, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kempner mentioned, um, if everything came about, if a person wanted to sell their house, if a developer wanted to buy, if, if those two things happened, and they wanted to move forward with this, but it, it no way represents something that has to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think we discussed, aren't the words like potential, or, aren't there definitely words indicating that these are, these are, I, these are renderings of examples?
I thought there was too, going back to what Mark said, I, I, I thought I remember saying a potential, you know, example, or something to that effect of, this isn't a for-sure thing, that somebody can come in and take your house, and.
Well, on page fifty-seven, it says, concept plan.
Yeah, concepts.
Exactly what that means.
But, you know, I, I, I just kinda think the language could be, uh, worked a little bit, and, and, um, it would stress that this is, you know, this is highly, almost conjectural, what, what, what we're really saying is that if you're gonna do something like this, this is the part of Berkeley that is most appropriate for it, but I think we've had, uh, I think in the last update, we, we designated, uh, twelve and, um, uh, and Greenfield for the, for the same purpose, that, that intersection, um, um, and. And nothing happened there, am I right, Marty? I wasn't around on that update.
Well, nothing's happened on Greenfield for many decades and in two thousand and seven, we tried something. That didn't work and.
Right.
Many times, we've collectively just thrown up our hands, we don't know what to do. This is a great concept of what could happen. This involves sixteen residential lots, so, you know.
Yeah, right.
That's, you know, we can't, we can say the chances are, but it could happen, but most likely won't. But the idea is, this kind of a development, whether it's this big or smaller or larger, in, in the past, we looked at maybe an assisted living type project, which would also take up a property very similar size, sixteen lots or so. So, this is just a concept, conceptual example of what could happen if everything, you know, works out. But it's by no means, you know, that's why it's generic. We don't know where this is on purpose. It's just an idea of something, we want something to happen on Greenfield, I think we all agree. What is that? It's a difficult, it's a tough nut and this would be a good type of thing. Now, the people living on Elwood, that, that street is develop, redeveloping, it's one of the biggest redeveloping streets in town. So, that may nix anything like this ever happening because there's some wonderful new houses along there.
True.
So, and that's fine, that's great, that's wonderful. So, that's why it's just a concept. And we always run into this, as, you know, I've said and we've all said in times, whenever you do a concept, it is somewhere and people do, get a little riled up, you know, that's my property or whatever. So, we try to keep it generic.
One of the things we're trying to do is tell property owners and developers.
Future developers.
If they're interested in doing something like this, this is where.
Yeah.
We're going to tell them to, to, to do it. And, you know, the, so I, I don't, I don't think we're talking about changing any, any substance here, but I, I'm, I'm just thinking maybe the language could be a little stronger, a little more, a little more stressing, a little bit more just how, you know, how, maybe not difficult, but just, just how complicated it would be to put these kind of projects together. Wouldn't have to be anything elaborate, I mean, that's just my, that's just my feeling about it.
I mean, I do think people get very nervous when this is their street and, and they start to look at that stuff. And I think these conversations are great, but you'd have to be watching right now to understand, right? And if you look at this master plan a year from now and go, oh my God, that's, they're not talking about my street. So, I, I don't know what the solution is there, except education and if there's some way to work in some bit of sentence or two that kind of.
You know, and at the risk, I, I just add one thing, you know, at the risk of getting a little off-topic here, but whoever developed this town wanted to put a bungalow on every single forty-foot lot they could find. And.
Heck, yeah.
You know, it would probably be something we could live with along Greenfield, but, but it's changing and not in a way that I think is particularly attractive. You know, you're getting, some of these bungalows are converted to insurance offices and others are not and, you know, it's a little bit haphazard and, and I think as a planning entity, we want to, we want to try to steer the development along there so that it isn't just kind of, kind of evolve into something what isn't, isn't really very attractive, you know? Which I think it's kind of trending that way with a few exceptions. So, so.
I mean, you can pretty much do anything on Greenfield.
So, guys, I want to pause here for a second and see if there's anyone from the public who wants to comment on this item? So, is there anyone in the audience who wants to comment on this item?
William Seaman, thirty-four sixty-one Elwood. You know, I bought this house in nineteen seventy-two. And ever since I've bought it, you people have been trying to change that area. What's a person supposed to do? I mean, you keep trying to change it and nothing's really happening. As far as putting up a three-story building behind my house, I would not be happy with that at all. We've got some apartments down farther and they're not exactly the best of places, but people have gotten along with it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else in the audience in person? Aaron, do we receive any emails besides the communication we've already gone through?
I have not, no.
And Dan, is there anyone who wants to comment virtually on this master plan item?
There is not. Oh, there is.
He texted and said, "No hands."
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go back to the planning commission. I do think.
Oh, he said there is.
Okay, go ahead then.
There is now, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
If you give me one moment, Joel, I gotta fix.
We can't hear anything, Dan.
Can the council chambers hear me? Can you hear me?
I can.
We have some tougher technical difficulties, so if you'll give me one moment.
We can see you, Dan, but we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Joel, can you still hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, give me one moment.
All right, Joel, go ahead.
Yes, the public comments are being requested for the Greenfield Elwood specifically or the entire plan?
They're for the entire plan.
Okay, so, it, it sounds like you guys are concentrating on the zoning and I'm, I'm just not sure why it wouldn't be all encompassed. I've reviewed, for example, the Royal Oak plan and it seems to incorporate not just the, the DDA-type plan, but the Parks and Rec plan, the zoning plan, et cetera.
Uh, okay, is, is that all you had, had to comment? We can have Aaron answer some of that for you?
Yeah, I guess, again, I would, I would agree with the, the wording changes that this is conceptual. My biggest issue is with expanding the current zoning in the Coolidge corridor. It's, it's the future zoning, not necessarily the conceptual. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you and sorry for the technical difficulties. Is that, is that all, Dan? Okay. So, Aaron, do you want to maybe go over some of the differences between zoning and future land use and conceptual versus actual and those sorts of things?
Yeah, so, in our master plan draft, we did call out what the purpose of, of a zoning map and a future land use map is, just so that way we could provide some clarity for people. So, the future land use map is kind of an ideal of what could be done, the kind of uses that you would want to see, commercial versus residential versus industrial. It's what we would like to see in the community. The zoning ordinance is based on the master plan, but it really narrows down the types of uses that are going to be in each, in each area. So, while the commercial area may span several different types of districts, and in our future land use map, we have things such as Gateway and the downtown. And those uses, while there might be commercial in each one, it's specific to the type of area that you're looking at. So, future land, just for an example, the future land use map calls out the Gateway District on Woodward and then also, you know, kind of the downtown on, on Coolidge, so, or the Coolidge District. The types of uses that you want in those types of areas are going to be dictated by your zoning ordinance and the zoning ordinance map, and they may be very different. So, on Woodward, you want something that's a little bit more auto-centric. You want something, the, the gas stations there would be appropriate, something that, that would require bringing people into the community, whereas something down in the Coolidge District, on Coolidge there or even on Twelve Mile, you want something that's a little bit more pedestrian-friendly. So, the, the vintage rug, rug shop that we were talking about there, it, it wouldn't, it would be fine on Woodward, but it's really ideal for a place on, on Coolidge. And we don't want something that's super auto-centric in our downtown because we want people to, to come and congregate and walk and enjoy, not come in, do their business and leave really quickly, like Woodward is, is alone too. And future land use zoning and what was the other?
Um, I, I think.
Conceptual versus site plan?
Yeah, just the idea of what a conceptual design is and how that might be different than a site plan that would follow zoning ordinances.
Right, right. And that's exactly it. So, a conceptual like we have in our master plan is, it's an idea. It's, it's something that could come about. So, the, the rendering that's provided on Greenfield and Elwood is several buildings. It has some green infrastructure, or, uh, green space there. It has some parking. It looks fairly pretty when you look at it. But it doesn't take into account lighting, parking requirements, elevation, setbacks, height, lot coverage. Those are all things that we look at it a little bit more adeptly in a site plan. So, even though the, the Greenfield conceptual rendering has multiple buildings and it has a, a lot of this, when we really get down to looking at a site plan, that idea might not translate as, you know, a hundred percent into your site plan because of the constraints that are dictated by your zoning ordinance, specifically the parking, your, the green space, things of that nature. And those are the things that the planning commission looks at really in-depth and comprehensively when we go through our site plan review process, to make sure that it conforms with all of our zoning ordinances. The master plan is a guidepost and a guiding document in order for us to make those ordinances, but they are just a, a guiding document. Nothing is, is set in stone or permanent until it is in our zoning ordinance and adopted by council. Does that help?
Yes, I, I think that that helps. And it, it builds a little bit, I think, on what we're trying to get at with the idea of the Greenfield Elwood concept. So, typically, a transition between single-family uses like we see on Elwood and a more major corridor would be multiple-family. It's a, it's a typical transition. If you kind of step up, you'd go from single-family to multiple-family and if you kept going, you might go to office and service and then onto commercial and so on. So, they increase in intensity as they go. And I think what we're trying to do with the concepts in the master plan is show how the Elwood side, which would, would remain two stories, at least as far as the master plan examples are, and the zoning ordinance would still have to be written to, to incorporate that, that we're trying to make sure the Elwood side still looks single-family in nature. That's why the concept shows the parking behind. The Greenfield side, where three stories is currently allowed, is a little bit more intense because the road itself is, is a little bit more intense. And that's what I think we're trying to get at here. And we're trying to, to take what currently exists along Greenfield, as Commissioner Richardson is saying, is kind of turning into a hodgepodge of things. And repurpose that space to something that looks a little bit more attractive along the Greenfield street front while maintaining the single-family character we have on the Elwood side. Like Aaron said, the, the concepts in here are meant to reflect that, but they don't include all of the rules that would go along with a development like that. That's something that we'd have to work on to, in the future and would really include further refinement of some of those ideas that are in the master plan. So, having said all that, I'm, I'm comfortable with what's shown in the master plan because I, I do think the intent is to keep the single family character on Elwood, but provide some opportunity for some upgraded developments on Greenfield instead of what's currently kind of turning over in a way maybe that, that doesn't fit the, the character of the city that we want to see. Does anyone else have any comments? I know this side of the table hasn't had the opportunity to say too much.
You kind of just said everything I was going to say. We did, and, much better than I would have said it though. So, we did have at-length discussion about the Elwood and we wanted to keep it our single-family. That's why they did recommend that we put the, the smaller structures on Elwood to not disrupt that. I, I think I may have been one of many that said, that street is being redeveloped, heavily redeveloped, and there's a lot of residents on that street, new residents and old residents. Greenfield, we do need to do something with, or we should probably look at Greenfield, but again, it would have to be a developer coming in or somebody coming in saying, "I want to buy these properties." It's not the city taking properties from our residents. It's more of a, a wishlist or, you know, a, a vision of what Greenfield could look like, but obviously, it would have to be a developer to do that while keeping Elwood the way, pretty much the way it is, keeping it single-family or, you know, smaller structure so it doesn't disrupt that neighborhood. And currently, on Greenfield, we talked about before, they do allow three stories. Like, I could, I could go buy one tomorrow and, a lot and build it with the setbacks and the, the requirements. It's already set, so there is that part of it. So, I think, you know, it does give a little bit of pause when you look at it and you think, oh, this could be next to me. But really, it's, it's more of the Greenfield we were thinking of with Elwood having the smaller structures.
Julia or Joe, anything?
I, no.
Only thing I wanted to clarify too, so for the future land use of residential corridor, if I remember correctly, single-family homes are still not allowed use.
Yeah.
Right, so, yeah, so it's.
Primary use.
Yeah, I mean, it's primary use still, even though it has a different designation than the single-family neighborhood. So, like, all in all, it's also an option.
Correct, yes. Okay, are there other components that anyone wants to discuss?
One of the written comments talked about should versus must. And that's a very good, that's a very good suggestion. I think maybe our consultant or Ms. Erin here might want to go through and hit all the shoulds and musts, and there may be some that aren't right. There may be some that should be shoulds and should be musts. So, that may be something we want to look at. Because there are some things we see in here, this must, we want, this will, we want this to happen, but there's a lot in there that should or may, we use the word may a lot. We should probably just carefully go through and find them and make sure the, the appropriate, you know, word is in there.
Just a thought. My only suggestion if we do that is to define shall, must, may in the very beginning of the document, so it's clear that if something is a guidance for something is like regulatory or whatever we want to call it, like a strong wish, because everyone's definition of shall, must, may.
Well, I think it's pretty obvious.
I mean, I've, a lot of documents I read have clearly defined what shall, must, and may mean as sort of a, this is what we suggest you do, this is what would be, we would like to do, and this is what you have to do.
So, go, go ahead.
As devil's advocate.
As doubles advocate, isn't everything in the master plan kind of a sh-
Shall.
A shall? I mean, even if you say must, it doesn't absolutely have to happen.
I think the the way the comment was written, it was on sidewalks and they must conform to ADA, so-
Well, that's the next item.
That was the comment, I think that-
But but-
Regulatory.
Right.
Should isn't, he, here, I'll I'll read it, and I know Eric who wrote this. Should is not a must. It implies a choice. If you're intending uh if you're intentionally using should to create some wiggle room in the guidelines, well, he says he's concerned it's going too far. Well, there's some places where uh the word should or may or might or whatever is very appropriate. As we talked about uh duplexes, we talked about in the future, looking at duplexes or or smaller multifamilies in the resident, the single-family residential areas, we talked about. We may look at that in the future. I don't know if that's the exact word, but um but there are things in here that I believe there's some that were musts or shall. So I just, oh, I'm getting at it. That's a good comment. We should just be careful that we aren't imposing a a a order with a with a choice in some locations.
I mean, we need to be accurate.
That's, that's correct.
If you're talking about a a federal regulation, a safety regulation or something, it's appropriate to say must.
Oh, absolutely.
But uh taking Lisa's point, this whole document is is not a must. It's a it i- it is a shall-type document.
It is. It it absolutely is.
And that's that's in the legal sense as well as the the substantive sense too. So um it it has a legal role, and that role is advisory, essentially advisory. So it, so we have, we have to, I think we have to be judicious about saying must.
So that makes sense, I think, Mark. We should maybe the um Carla Wortman could go through and and things like sidewalk design and ADA guidelines, we know that those have to be followed regardless of what the master plan says. So those should probably say must. But everything else should maybe be a shall.
Probably. The vast majority.
And if there's a third level, then, because that's my reference is there's three levels, a guidance level, a regulatory level, and then there's a middle level.
Well, let's avoid the use of the word maybe.
Well, may, yeah, shall, must, may.
Yeah, I see, just shall and must kind of makes sense. I I don't know that we need to be like crazy nitpicky with this, but if they can do a quick-
I don't know, I could break out my thesaurus and-
Yeah, let's not go nuts. Go ahead, go ahead.
Just one other comment about the parking. It did come up in several of our comments. Um I don't know if they can write something that that would be, like, just like she did in our draft letter about that would be more appropriate for a zoning ordinance update than in our master plan, because I think that's coming up. We've been talking about it for, I don't know, a couple of years, it seems.
We've been nibbling at it for a while.
And waiting to get their master plan done and and so maybe-
I'm excited. I can't wait to to start in on it, really.
So maybe bring something like that, just a hu- one line or a couple of lines just to point out that that's not appropriate for, you know, for this, but more so for our zoning ordinance.
Yeah, that, there are references in the plan to amending the parking requirements.
For sure, but maybe, I don't know, explaining how uh the avenue of doing that. No pun intended.
I mean, and honestly, it's it's a huge document to go through, especially if you're not going through it twice, three times a month, right? Um so to sit down and try and take in all of that information i- is probably hard for average resident to do.
I think the way you laid it out with supplementing this with with plans that address specific areas along with zoning amendments is more methodical and more logical and and easier to digest for everybody.
Well, we do have the implemation, implementation phase of this too, so a lot of that goes into that. Most of this is the eye candy, the, you know, what-if stuff, wouldn't that be great stuff? But the implementation is the part where we get into, yes, we're going to be looking at the parking and such things as that, so.
Maybe just a little bit more discussion on what the implementation component is would suffice for all of that?
Sure, expand on that, yeah. And that's probably a perfect example. Parking is a good example that anybody would understand in the implementation. That's you know, and and our, you know, rewriting or looking at all our zoning ordinances.
So I think these comments that um we're getting at are not gigantic changes. It seems like we could move forward with a public hearing. Would the planning commission be comfortable with that with some of these more minor edits made?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you need a motion for that, Erin?
I would like a motion, but I also would like to go back and just double-check and make sure that I have, I have the right things uh in place here that we've we've discussed, so.
I would tend to agree with Erin. Why don't we, I, you know, nobody wants to put it off longer, but if there are some things that you and our 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 planning consultants want to look at, it wouldn't be a bad idea. Is that what you're implying?
No, no, no. I was talking about the discussion items here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That we wanted to go back. I I I'm in agreement that I think that what we've what we've been discussing, we can make modification for and bring back to you at the public hearing-
Okay, that's fine.
And show you that that these are the tweaks that we've done, and if you're comfortable with that. I just want to make sure that the items that we're tweaking I have, that we've discussed tonight, I have here to-
Okay, no problem.
And so to confirm at the public hearing, if we don't feel comfortable with those edits, we do have the opportunity to to listen to public comment and and hold the public hearing, but not to send or adopt this at that point.
Correct, you can postpone the item, yes.
Okay.
The we, and with this, we recommend a city council once again, okay.
Okay, go ahead. Go through your list.
So um to to Commissioner Richardson's points, going into more detail about assembling the properties and something on Greenfield and Elwood and how how um I I don't know the right choice of words I'm going to use here, but-
Just elaborating on the process.
Just just elaborating a little bit on the process and how that would go about and how this is not something that is just going to happen overnight, that this would endeavor um developer, city, property owner, coordination and agreement, something along those lines.
Okay.
Um so expand on that. Um wanted to keep residential scale on Elwood, so we'll just include that, uh the importance of keeping the residential scale on Elwood. Um I know we talked about it a little bit more, but maybe just driving that home a little bit, a little bit more. The should versus must uh suggestion, so we'll go through and look through all of those um all of those instances and make sure that we have it on the the right, the right scale. Um, excuse me. Expand the implementation stage and what occurs after adoption of the document and certainly going into um the parking ordinance and how things are going to be going through uh that process after after adoption.
And that could be such as the parking, you know, as an example, and I think most people would understand that's an issue. We've talked about it forever, but that's a good example of the implementation. And then there's all these others, but that's a perfect example to uh describe it with.
So those are the four items that I have for uh me to work with Carla Wortman over the next couple of weeks and get that document amended and does everyone feel comfortable with those?
Yes.
Okay. In that instance, I don't see that there's anything substantive that would prohibit us from moving forward if if the planning commission feels comfortable setting a public hearing.
And you don't need a motion or anything, right?
I would like a motion.
You would like a motion. Okay, who wants to make a motion to set the public hearing?
I will move to set the public hearing with the included changes that Erin just talked about.
Support.
Erin, could you call the roll?
Uh Stern?
Yes.
Bartis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, that takes us to liaison reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
I will.
Go ahead.
Um, the DDA didn't have a quorum, so they didn't get a whole lot done. Um but we do have an amazing uh month planned. Mike, do you want to, do you want me to give it or do you want to come talk? All right. Um, so, yeah, so there's a huge month-long thing. Starts this weekend with Restaurant Weekend. Um that's on October first and second. Then we have the Night Market on October 2nd. There'll be trolley rides. There's some halalusions, some like moving, awesome uh Halloween window kind of things. As you can see, as you've been driving around, you've seen the Halloween characters and stuff pop up on the windows all around downtown. Uh there'll be movie nights at Berkeley First on the 7th, 14th, 21st and 28th. There's Ladies Night Out on October 14th. There's a trick-or-treat stroll, so we're getting trick-or-treating through our downtown. Um and then after that, for the end of October, right the day before Halloween, on October 30th, we're going to have Monster Mash. That will be on Dorothea, um Dorothea and Coolidge right there by Sugar Kisses and the Dry Cleaner. And that's going to have a DJ and some games and photo ops and activities for kids to do. It's going to be an awesome month.
Cool. Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah.
Mark, anything environmental?
Uh environmental did meet. Uh we did have a quorum barely. Um currently, we're we're down two members. Uh we we have a s- seven-member body and we're down two members. And uh just been informed that yet another member is going to be leaving. Uh and um what we have on our plate is a request from uh, an informal request from council to begin uh laying the groundwork for a sustainability plan for for the uh city. I'm anticipating that a a major component of that plan will be um green infrastructure and um, you know, with an eye towards stormwater management. Um uh one of our current serving members has had a terrible problem with flooding over the summer. Uh and uh and he is now thinking of leaving town uh because of the flooding issue. So uh we're painfully aware that that uh stormwater management is still a uh a critical uh problem and and it'll be a high priority for us. So I'm I'm saying all this to encourage anybody listening or uh that has an interest in any of these topics to consider applying for membership on on the uh the the committee, um so we can uh we can, you know, get up and moving on 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 this project.
And when do they meet, in case anyone is interested?
Oh, uh we meet the uh third Thursday of every month.
In the evening, right?
In the evening at six thirty, yep.
Yeah, that's a big list of to-do, so.
Right.
Anyone else? Okay. Um, any commissioner staff comments?
I have one.
Go ahead, please, thank you.
Um, so when we were getting ready for this meeting, I was looking through our ordinances. And for our facade, it says that we need to see a site plan. It doesn't say like a shortened site planned or a partial site plan. It says it triggers a site plan review. So I think, I don't think that's our intent, is to have a full site plan review. It's to kind of have a facade review. Um so I think we probably should change that just to stay within our legal because, I mean, as it stands, we should be looking at everything for a site plan review. Um and then uh while we were talking about parking, it reminded me that I did one of the training sessions on parking. And they had a great um, a great view of how you go about figuring out your parking, and that was to do a parking study in your own area. And don't necessarily use what the books say, you know, what those manuals say or what your neighbors do. Like go in, do a parking study, find out what your current community needs actually are and go from there. And I was like, yes, that makes so much sense. Why doesn't everybody do that all the time? Um so something to think about as we move forward to look at parking regulations.
Erin?
Um, just a couple of updates. So um sorry, um as you know, the um city council has expanded and allowed for the outdoor dining, uh temporary outdoor dining, the sales service areas that we allowed during uh during the COVID shutdown to continue until uh end of next year. So uh during that time, we're going to be looking at our outdoor dining standards and how we want to to do that and also outdoor air businesses. Um but also it gives us the opportunity to look at the uh space that's being currently used by Berkeley Common at Griffith and Twelve Mile and see if we want to look at that space for an outdoor public plaza. It's been closed for uh over a year now. A lot of people seem to like it and enjoy it. We've done a couple of studies, or I'm sorry, a couple of surveys in the area. People seem to really enjoy it, uh especially the residents. So uh we've engaged and started having conversations with uh the Road Commission of Oakland County to see how we would go about that and if it's actually feasible to do. Um we're, we've had one conceptual meeting with them to kind of go over it. They they seem like they were interested in continuing the conversation. So we'll be meeting with them on Thursday to on-site and kind of walk around the area and see what uh what we can do and where we go. Nothing has been decided on this happening. We're just kind of compiling all the data analysis and uh from the reviewing bodies to see if this is something that council would like to, would like to um consider. Um Vincetta, they're um, they're continuing to to, you know, the houses are being demolished. Um the development team at Vincetta has submitted some conceptual plans to the city for us to review, so we're going through and making sure it complies not only with the consent judgment but with our our ordinances. And then we'll be moving through with the pre-application meeting. Uh as I've mentioned before, that those plans will be coming to to Planning Commission. They'll be doing a full site plan. Uh but right now, we're just making sure that we don't have any major red flags. We certainly don't want to bring those plans here if there's something that's in stark violation of the consent judgment because you can't approve it then. Um so uh we do have a couple of other projects that are coming forward. Um two of them were actually supposed to be on this month's agenda, or yeah, this month's agenda, but uh they had some uh glaring issues that needed to be addressed, so uh hopefully we'll have two two other site plans for you in October. In addition to a couple of other uh ordinance amendments that we've been, we've been working through and waiting for some uh information for. So uh next month uh should should prove to be pretty busy. Thank you.
Thanks. And yeah, Marty?
Um, as you know, in the last few months, I've talked a lot about this issue that happened with the ZBA a few months ago. Uh I don't know, is is Ross Gavin present tonight?
I didn't see him on the list. Let me just double-check and make sure he hasn't joined.
Can you hear me? I don't know if the audio is working or not. Hold on, Ross.
Oh, I guess he is.
You can just run him out that I'm listening. That's fine, Dan.
I recognize that, that laugh. Hey, Ross.
Hey, Ross. Good evening.
Ross, can you hear me?
Hello?
Okay, I'm going to go over, I want to go over a few things. Um feel free to butt in if I say anything inaccurate or leave something out, you know, as I would do, obviously. I do that myself. Um, a few nights ago, I had a lengthy and very cordial conversation with um several city council members. They invaded my front porch. And the city manager regarding the recent decision. It was very cordial. We had a good, we had a good uh, good conversation. Um as a reminder, this this body has had similar situations. We had a special use six or eight years ago. A recent rezoning and maybe you were here, some of you were here.
Can you speak more into the mic?
Oh, I can do that. I'm not loud enough. Um, so we've had similar situations, as I said. Uh both of those came to us twice. Uh we recommended approval twice. And the city council, you know, as our elected decision-makers, rejected our recommendation, recommendations also twice. So we gnashed our teeth and moved on. Um ZBA is a little different. You all know that they're the last word. The, they are the final local arbitrators of things that come before them, the ZBA, and their decisions are not a recommendation. An applicant who's denied their remedy is to go to circuit court. I think everybody knows that. And that's what this particular applicant did. Uh when the city council received that, and Ross, please do butt in if you, if I'm saying something wrong here. Thank you. Looked at the parameters of case and decided not to, not to defend it. Um, as I understand, a court hearing never happened. The uninterested third party, which is a third, or I'm sorry, the circuit court judge, never made determination. So effectively, they overturned the ZBA decision, and they're entitled to do this. Not everybody knows that. I didn't know that. So um I asked them in this discussion, mostly the mayor, uh four or five times, what did ZBA, or I'm sorry, what did the city council find that ZBA did? And I've expressed that before. Um, that's the obvious question, you know, if they overturn something. They, again, mostly the mayor, responded back four or five times. They, again, mostly the mayor, responded back four or five times that there was no single item, they just had a different opinion. And they're, you know, they reviewed their, uh, they reviewed the case and they had a, they determined that, that the application was a reasonable request. So it wasn't a matter of right or wrong, it's a, um, a different, a difference of interpretation of the application that was, uh, before them and before the ZBA. Um, I brought up a couple of issues, the perception of what many citizens had, um, expressed to me over the last few months of what was going on. Uh, I won't get into that, I can, if somebody wants me to, and precedent, you know, that's something we discuss all the time here, it was ZBA. Um, you know, every decision we're, 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 we make, we effectively try to predict what's going to happen in the future with another applicant. Um, they, again, mostly the mayor, again, emphatically said that what they did is not a, not a carte blanche for future applicants to sue when they don't get their way. Situation occurs again, like all cases, it'll be assessed on a case-by-case basis. So, this has been a big deal, big enough that two of the ZBA, um, members, two effective members decided to resign. Um, sometimes closed-door sessions, although a necessary tool, an important tool, uh, can send the wrong message, especially when it affects, uh, directly affects an appointed volunteer board, us, ZBA. Um, so, for the record, I don't agree with the, with the decision they made regarding this case, that's my opinion. I don't believe it improves the overall built environment of the city of Berkeley, that's also my opinion. But the city council as the elected decision-makers for our little town was fully within right of what they did. And that's part of their job, and I think we need to respect that. So, uh, Ross, did I leave anything out?
Marty, I apologize, I can only hear kind of every, every little bit.
Suffice it to say, I appreciate you taking the time to, to talk as well.
Okay.
Okay.
I think, I, I think I responded pretty much what our discussion was, uh, Sunday evening. So, um, um, when you watch this or whatever, uh, get back to me if I left anything out and we'll amend that. Are there any questions that? So, you know, unfortunate, it's an unfortunate situation that happened, it's really too bad it happened. But it is their, it is their choice to make, they are the ultimate final decision-makers in this case. So, um, I'm not going to push it anymore, if anybody else has anything they want to say, I'm sure the city council will be happy to hear it. So, uh, so let's, uh, let's move on.
Thanks, Marty.
So, I, I, this calls to mind a, a similar situation, uh, involving this body and Vincetta Garage. Uh, we, uh, had, uh, turned down Vincetta's request for, uh, rezoning to add parking, and, um, uh, Vincetta went to court, and ultimately that case was settled, and Vincetta is adding parking. And, uh, um, there, I guess my point is to that, to this situation and the one you were talking about, there are, uh, we're focused in our bodies on, on doing a specific job. City council has to weigh a myriad of factors, uh, in making decisions about the, you know, involving the financial future of, of, of the city and the.
Well, every aspect.
Well, every, yeah, every aspect, financial being one of them. So I think those of us who serve in a voluntary capacity have to, we, we have to do this understanding that we're, in, in some respects, we're advisors, not, not with the ZBA, uh, situation, but, but we're in some respects advisors, the elected representatives of the people, that's where the buck really stops.
The final decision, right.
And, and, uh, if we're overruled, um, I think we have to take care that we don't take it personally.
No, absolutely not.
Uh, you know, um, uh, so, um, but just one last thing about the Vincetta situation. It kind of illustrates the dilemmas that we're going to get into when we review the parking ordinances. Um, you know, that is a situation where adequate parking existed within walking distance of this facility, and it could not be utilized. You know, it could not be, that parking could not be utilized. Parking lots sit vacant, uh, during Vincetta's peak business hours. That kind of thing breaks my heart, but, but there's a set of circumstances that are very difficult to overcome. And, and, and that's going to be our challenge. How do we, how do we find ways to efficient, you know, to minimize parking and to use our land, uh, efficiently, um, uh, for that purpose? Which, you know, that, it's not going to be that easy, so, uh, that's, those are just my comments.
Any other comments? Okay, um, with that, any motions to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Erin, could you call the roll?
Uh, Bartis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. All right, thank you, everyone, have a good evening.